Okay, I'm calling this meeting of the Select Board and our public hearing for this special town meeting to be held January 19th, 2023. It's November 28th, and we will be hearing Articles 1, 2, and 3 from your special town meeting warrant. So starting off with Article 1, fossil fuel-free infrastructure, to confirm the authorization to apply for participation in the demonstration project, I'm going to give that presentation. So just a minute. Okay, so Article 1 will be that I will move that the town take affirmative action is printed in the warrant. Actually, we will have a revised motion for this article due to some editorial comments that we have received over the last week. They don't change the substance, but correct some typographical errors. So what is the background of this article? First of all, so next slide, please. The town made a commitment to fossil fuel-free reductions, or fossil fuel reductions, with the adoption of Article 51 at Annual Town Meeting in 2027. And that article commits the town to reducing its greenhouse gas emissions in line with the Paris Accords. And it was clear very quickly that the best way to do that was to reduce emissions from the built environment. So in 2021, Annual Town Meeting approved Article 31, which was for home rule legislation and a bylaw amendment to regulate fossil fuel infrastructure for new construction. And so that article was presented. We petitioned the court, the general court, to adopt our petition. And they gathered together all of the ones that had been presented by towns, and they created a demonstration project for the 10 towns, up to 10 towns, and 10 had passed bylaws, to actually implement a statewide or state general bylaw. So what we're doing now is we are taking our bylaw provisions and aligning them with the legislation that was passed. So move to Slide 3, please. So the, our home rule petition was H. 4117, but the law that was signed by Governor Baker was H. 5060, an act driving clean energy and offshore wind. And that really was well-aligned in most respects with what we had already passed. But what we'd like to do is just make sure that we're 100% in alignment, just to prevent any concerns about us being able to move ahead in the demonstration project. So this, if you move to Slide 4, what the kinds of changes that we're making here are simply to update the references to the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources as the body that's managing this process, to the definition of onsite fossil fuel infrastructure to align with the state legislation, and then to expand the list of exempted organizations to include research labs, hospitals, and scientific or medical research facilities as provided for in the legislation. So that's the substance. And you can see in your warrant, the full text of our bylaw with the edits that are proposed for this warrant article. So with that in mind, are there any questions from the board? Okay, are there any questions from those present? And if not, are there any questions from those in attendance? If so, please use the raised hand feature on Zoom and identify yourself and ask your question. I'm not seeing any. So I think that that concludes this article, and we'll move to Article 2, which Keith Bergen will present. Go ahead, Mr. Bergman, Article number 2.
Very good. And there we go, with the presentation up on the big board. Keith Bergman, Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. And the trust strongly urges favorable action on special town meeting articles 2 and 3, which would reauthorize the filing of home rule petitions for a real estate transfer fee and a building permit surcharge to fund affordable housing. Can we back up one slide? No. Can we go to the first slide? Thanks. Both of these bills were originally filed following the 2019 town meeting's approval of a package of articles to create and fund a municipal affordable housing trust for Concord. The trust thanks the Select Board for its vote of October 24th to include these articles on the January 19th warrant in order to be able to refile these bills in the slightly amended form for the new legislative session, which begins in January. Next slide, please. In its 2019 report, the Affordable Housing Funding Committee had found that Concord needs predictable, sustainable revenue sources so that funds are readily available when affordable opportunities arise, and without the necessary fund stack, quickly valuable opportunities could be missed. And while the trust can act on short notice and outside of the annual cycle of budgets and town meetings, sustainable funding is required in order for us to be able to do so. Next slide, please. The funding committee's plan included a package of articles that were approved by the 2019 town meeting. First was to create a municipal affordable housing trust by accepting the authorizing state statute. Then a year later, Town Meeting approved the form of a bylaw for the trust that had been drafted by the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee. The second part of the 2019 plan was, in order to provide long-term dedicated funding sources for the trust, home rule petitions were first filed for the real estate transfer fee and building permit surcharge. Now, the original estimates were that some 2.76 million a year might be raised from those sources. Some revised estimates have done, and they've come in a little lower, at 2.2 to 2.4 million, which I will discuss later. And the third part was to provide interim funding in the form of appropriation of $500,000 from Town Meeting in 2019. And as you know, that was subsequently done at the next three years. So we have a total of $2 million that's been appropriated by Town Meeting to date. Next slide, please. And here's the status of those funds. $150,000 went towards two affordable units at 930 Main Street, $50,000 for design of an additional unit at the Giraud property, 369 Comm Ave, $95,000 to preserve one unit at Emerson Annex on Stowe Street, $650,000 went towards the million-dollar cost for the Concord Housing Development Corporation to acquire the one-acre portion of Asabet River Bluff property, on which there'll be a total of five affordable units. And in fact, $50,000 of that, $650,000, went towards a deposit, which was paid in January in order to preserve the May Town Meeting's ability to purchase the whole property. The trust also had voted to commit $1 million towards the Christopher Heights Junction Village, but then decommitted those funds when the project did not proceed. So those funds remain available. Next slide, please. As we go forward, the town's housing production plan, which is currently being updated and will be in front of the Select Board and the Planning Board next month for adoption, that that plan will provide important guidance for us for the coming five years. The bylaw that created the trust requires the trustees to develop policy goals and statements that are consistent with the town's adopted housing goals, subject to approval by the Select Board. And the, so action is scheduled by the Select Board and the Planning Board in December. The hope is to have the state's Department of Housing and Community Development approve the plan in the coming year. And just a preview of some of the things that are in the draft form currently, which could be helped by funds made available from these dedicated funding sources. Asabet River Bluff, we need funds to develop all five affordable units on that one acre. Junction Village, the CHDC still owns the 12-acre site and will be undertaking a process of determining what can be done with that property. And because of the deed restrictions and the state legislation controlling the property, 100% of whatever housing units are created there would need to be affordable. Other strategies identified thus far in the draft housing production plan, acquiring other privately-owned land or surplus town property if available for affordable housing, may also have the opportunity to negotiate increased affordable units in private developments that come along, or even to buy down moderate-income units to 80% of area-wide median income so they could be counted on the subsidized housing inventory. Next slide, please. So let's look at the specifics of the two measures, beginning with the real estate transfer fee in Article 2. Next slide. This would reauthorize filing of the legislation for a transfer fee on the buyer for the portion of a purchase price that is above $1 million. That's what's proposed in this form. The prior form had, the original form had proposed the fee be assessed on properties where the sale price was over $600,000 and where the cost of housing is only getting higher and higher. We thought it wise to raise the threshold for paying what would be a 1% transfer fee in that legislation. The fees collected would go to the trust. A number of transfers would be exempt from the fee, transfers to federal, state, local government, including Concord's housing entities, affordable housing deed-restricted properties, transfers to family members or confirmatory deeds for no consideration, or to charitable and religious organizations. The town's estimate is that if this 1% fee at this level had been in effect last year, it would have generated a total of $1.9 million for the trust. Next slide, please. Here are just a few examples of what the transfer fee might look like at various purchase price levels. For a purchase price at or below $1 million, the buyer would pay no fee. Just to take one example, a $2 million purchase price where 1 million is exempt, the 1% fee would be charged on the second million. In that case, a fee of $10,000, which turns out to be 0.5% in that case of the total purchase price. It's 1% applied to half of the purchase price, if you will. And there are other examples that you see as well. Next slide, please. Concord's real estate transfer fee would be used to benefit affordable, would be used for affordable housing to benefit households with incomes of up to 150% of area mean income in this proposal. The original petition in 2019 did not specify the percent of AMI. And in looking to cite a particular percentage in both of the home rule petitions, the trust is recommending 150% of AMI, which would enable us to fund workforce housing projects, including Planned Residential Developments, PRD, under Concord's zoning bylaw. And along with Concord, a number of other communities filed home rule petitions for the current legislative session, Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, Nantucket Province Town, among others. All of those were favorably reported out by legislative committee, but did not pass in 2022, and so are being refiled for the new legislative session. The legislature might also pass, or maybe pass instead, a statewide real estate transfer fee for affordable housing. And Concord is a member of the coalition that's supporting that effort. The statewide bill that's been drafted would require acceptance just by town meeting and without a ballot vote. And so we're proposing the Concord's home rule petition do the same. And if this saved a year in implementing the new fee, it could save Concord a year's interim appropriation for the trust. Next slide. So here's that home rule petition process. Town Meeting votes to authorize the filing of the legislation. It's filed by the town's legislators on Beacon Hill. It's heard by legislative committee, and would need to be passed by the full House and Senate and signed by the governor in order to become law. It would then come back to Town Meeting voters for a final vote of approval before taking, in fact. Next slide. So let's look at the other home rule petition for a building permit surcharge for affordable housing in Concord. Next slide. Like the real estate transfer fee, funds from a building permit surcharge would also be deposited in the trust to benefit households of up to 150% of AMI. And if enacted by the legislature and the governor, would require a vote of acceptance by Town Meeting. Next slide. How much revenue might get generated from the building surcharge will depend on what the building permit rate is, what the surcharge level is that's set. When we, we see that for 2021, a $12 per $1,000 of construction value, base price for building permit fees raised, $1.1 million. If, so if a surcharge rate were to be, for example, 30%, $3, another $3.60 per thousand, that would produce an additional $344,000 per year. If 50%, say, $6, you would add $574,000. Whatever that is will be in the, will be in the exclusive control of the Select Board to determine when you're, when you're adopting a building permit surcharge. Next slide, please. So here's a revised estimate of total revenues. In 2019, you see, the total was 2.76 million. Real estate transfer fee was a lower estimate. Building surcharge was higher. In fact, it appears that the estimate at the, for this building permit surcharge at the time was based on $12 per 1,000 of construction value, which frankly seems a little steep. So we're looking at a lower, we're looking at lower estimates for the building permit surcharge in this round. And as it shows, 2.2 to 2.4 million total is possible. Next slide. So the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust can act quickly when opportunities arise, if there are dedicated funding sources are in place, and Concord voters can voice their continued support for the enactment of these measures by approving Articles 2 and 3 of the January 19th special town meeting. And thanks for your, thanks for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. And are there questions at this time from the board? Yes, Mr. Dane.
Do you happen to know what the dollar number is for the AMI? So we get some perspective on those benefits?
See, I'm looking in the room. I would, I don't have a reference, standing up here, I don't have a reference of what the 150% of AMI.
Do you have an estimate or any idea?
I would not want to give an estimate, but I can look it, look it up while, on my iPhone while I'm standing here. I don't see, I don't know who else is on the call, but if any town staff that deal with housing are on, that it's probably at their fingertips.
I'm seeing a number of different numbers, but I don't know that they are the official ones.
I mean, approximately.
Can I phone a friend?
I think that that's totally fair.
Yeah, Liz Russ, are you there? Marsha Rasmussen, are you there?
While I'm here, I don't have that, that information. This is Marsha Rasmussen. I'm, I too am looking it up.
Okay. Okay, I'm seeing the HUD limits.
I'm assuming that that's information we could provide and include in the slide deck for people to see.
Yeah, I'm seeing that the Boston, Cambridge, Quincy area for 2022, according to this HUD document, is 140,000 for a four-person household.
In fact, it's probably, now I have the draft housing plan on my phone.
Is that 80%?
That's 80%, sorry. Yeah, that's 80%. No, that's 100%. That's 100%.
So then it would be?
It's 140, so it'd be 210.
So 150% is 210,000 per year.
210,000 for a family of four.
It's a great question, and it is information that we need to put in here at, frankly, 80% to 100 and 150.
Very few affordable units are created with a 150% cap. Most of them are, you know, we try to make them on the lower end, 80%, of course, to get them to be qualified.
Right, 80% of AMI would be the level at which we can count them on the.
And that'd be more like 115,000.
Yeah, and if it's, and if it's a rental development, so long as 25% of the rental units are deed-restricted at 80%, the rest of them could be, the other 75% could be market rate. And the 150% of AMI was specific, what we've been calling Concord affordable, or the term has been, I didn't coin it. It's been, it's been told to us that 150% of AMI was viewed as Concord affordable. That's why it's in the Planned Residential Development bylaw. But we'll, we'll make sure that that information is in the presentation.
Yes, Terry.
Keith or anybody, do we know if any other cities and towns have adopted this type of special legislation? And if so, what, what were their numbers? I'm like especially curious if somebody does, you know, a $5,000, you know, paint job on their house or whatever, those types of things generally excluded.
Yeah, I know that there are plenty of other examples of real estate transfer fees. I'm not familiar with another building permit surcharge.
I would assume that the building permit surcharge would be general. You know, I mean, I just put a shed in my yard. The building permit fee was $208. And so I assume that it would be $250, you know?
Right.
It's new construction.
Right, it says in the proposed legislation that Select Board would determine some kind of amount, and if it exceeded that amount. So I like, if you had your house painted for $3,000, maybe that would not exceed the amount, but the shed might exceed, you know, it depends what the Select Board.
Okay, I think that the fewer exemptions, the simpler the implementation.
Right, that's why I'm curious whether any other city or town has done it and what they did, but.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Yes, Mary.
Keith, I think you mentioned that if a property has 25% at 80% AMI, then all the units count, even if some of them are at market rate?
For rentals. Yeah, that's the way rentals would work, and typically that's what happens with a 40B, that 20, that the developers making his money off, his or her money, off of the market rate units, which, which would not be deed-restricted at any level, not 150%, you know, sort of the, not, not, not 100, the market would, the market would dictate what those are the units were.
Right, for Junction Village, though, you mentioned that all of the units have to be affordable, right? So is that up to 150 or what do you?
No, that, no, I'd say that's affordable up to, well, the statute says affordable is determined by the Concord Housing Development Corporation, but since it, since the money was coming from, since a significant portion of the funding was coming from the Community Preservation Act, it would, it would not be, it would be going up. It would be for community housing, which is a limit of 100% of AMI.
I do believe, however, there were units that did go up to 150% in that planned.
I think that Christopher Heights had over 50% of the units were at 150% AMI.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming that.
I thought 150% was the threshold.
Which, if, if the, what I guess what I have to say is, to the extent that that's part of a funding plan, we need to be more comfortable, we will, the town will be much more comfortable with having the funding source be a state statute that spells out, that authorizes 150% because the.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, it's a question of whether, whether it is affordable or not.
Yeah.
I have one more question about Junction Village. You said that there were 12 acres there. How many of those acres have been under some kind of, put under some kind of conservation restriction?
To date, none.
Yeah, I don't think any.
None at this point?
None at this point. So we never put any of that under protection at all?
Not until.
You know, and from, just from watching other meetings that held by other committees, I see that they're, the, the CHDC was, was looking at, once there, once there finally was an approvable plan that we're going forward with, that would be, and you see what the configuration is on the land, that would be the point at which you would carve out the rest of it.
I see.
For affordable housing.
And then my comment is, I'm glad to see that the threshold for the, the real estate transfer fee went from 600 to 1 million.
Any questions from those that are in the room? Okay, then not seeing any there. Any questions from those that are attending on Zoom? If so, use the raised hand feature under Reactions at the bottom of your screen to indicate that you'd like to speak, and then unmute and make your comment or ask your I'm not seeing anyone on the Zoom. So I believe that takes care of Articles 2 and 3. And also, at this time, I'd like to conclude that public hearing for the special town meeting. Now, two-second pause. We're going to open another public hearing. This one is.
Did you call the regular special?
I've called us to order earlier.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're all present, so it's fine. So now we're going to have the fiscal year 2023 classification hearing with the Board of Assessors, and I see that members of the Board of Assessors are present.
So we move to open the public hearing?
And so, yes, let's move to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And I don't know, do the assessors want to bring themselves to order, or I guess you are here? You don't have a quorum. Okay, that's all right, you can still present, I think. Would you like to present from the podium?
Okay. All right.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Mr. Carr. Would you like to present?
Okay, shall I give my name and address? Or we, okay, so my name is David Carr. I am, I live at 82 Lonsbridge Road, and I am currently the Chair of the Board of Assessors. So let's start with, next slide, please. So the, to recapitulate, the purpose of this hearing is to determine how to distribute the tax levy. We can go for equally among all classes, or we can reduce the shares on one classes by increasing on another. Next slide, please. So we have here a little bit of history. The, on the right, actually, the historical breakdown of the, of the value in the town. The blue part is residential, and as you can see, it's almost everything. Everybody else is that little slice in the top. The chart on the left is the current fiscal 2023 numbers, which I believe are now certified, correct?
They're certified.
Yes, so those would be the numbers that we'd be going into here. And as you can see, the, historically, the numbers have been in the, in the area of, they've been creeping up towards 6 billion, and we are suddenly at, or a little over 6 billion, I think, we are suddenly at 8 billion. So we've had a very substantial increase in one year. Oh, next slide, please. Okay, so we have here the, the proposed levy divided by the town's taxable value. As you can see, the, that $8 billion down there is the little figure, the arrow pointing to it. And if we were to go, if we were to go with a single tax rate, that would result in a $12.96 on the $1,000 assessed value. That would be our tax rate. That is if we select factors of one for all of the tax shifts. Next slide, please. So here we have the certified, I believe that's certified?
Certified.
Also, the certified LA 13, which is our tax base, which is our growth. And as you can see, we've had, well, the growth has varied over the past few years, but we have, this year, we have, let's see, 1,241,514. And that, that is part of the factor that goes into levy. We're able to, we are able to tax that at the previous rate without having to raise the levy limit. So, next slide.
So that's record new growth, I think it's safe to say.
Well, let's see. Yes, I think it is. We have, we have been, we have been, yes, much lower than that last couple of years, and now we're suddenly well above a million.
Okay.
Okay, so now these, these numbers are not yet certified, but I believe we're fairly confident in them because they're all based on other numbers that are certified and so forth. But the, this again is the, between the LA 5, which gives you your $8 billion, and the, the tax rates. So we're looking at, it's $104 million?
104 million, 788, 382, 261.
Right, so that's, so for, so for the 104.788, et cetera, million-dollar levy, that's how we, that's how we break it out, by the tax, by the tax rates, sorry, by the tax 97 for residential and so forth. I think we can go to the next slide now. Okay, now if I can remind myself, yeah, this is again coming down to that single tax rate, if that's what we do. But we have some history here of the, of the values and the, and the rates. And as you can see, I'll point out, the lower left is the historical rates, and again, we've, we've done a, we've done a uniform rate since, I think, 1998, when we, in the, back in the 90s, we did have a split rate for the CIP, but we've been doing a split rate for years now. And it's been in the 14s for the past several years. So 1296 is a significant decrease. It, of course, is, balances our, it balances our increase in the valuation.
If, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify something for the people watching at home, because it can get a little confusing under Prop 2 and 1/2. So we've been in the 14s, and I can't quite read what the exact number is in 2022 there.
1476.
1476. And the total valuation, you said, went from 6-point-something billion to 8 billion for 2023. So our tax rate goes down to $12.96, so that the total levies is the same. Is that correct?
Because the tax levy is not determined by the valuation. The tax levy is determined by town meeting, and we have to adjust our tax rates in order to meet that levy based on the current valuations. Valuation goes up, we have to lower the tax rate in order to meet the same levy.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we are ready for the next slide. So once again, here we are. It's, so this is, this is, so these are the numbers, maybe a little bit clearer. We've picked out that 104 and some million dollars, and the total valuation of 8 billion and some. And we divide one by the other, which is how we get to the $12.96 per $1,000 assessed value. So, and we have the, we have a few examples. If you are, actually, these are the examples of how, of what the values are. We have, we don't have the tax rates for these.
We have the average assessed value and the median assessed value for the single family and the condos.
Yes, okay, so our median, our median has gone up from 971 to over a million dollars, 1,169,500, which is, again, it's, everything's gone up quite a bit. But the tax rate would be, you know, if you were a median home, you'd be, you'd be paying, let's see.
Average.
Yes, right, so I'm, I'm getting the average, the, yes, for that, for that average single-family dwelling, the new tax would be $15,156.72 after we apply that 1296 per I think we're ready for the next slide. Okay, now we get into the split tax rate. So there's a number of ways we can split the tax rate. There's the, well, this is actually the, we're concentrating on the CIP here. This, this split tax rate versus of the residential versus the other classes, commercial, industrial, and personal property. We are allowed to shift the, to shift the tax levy by increasing the, the rates of the, of the other classes higher than residential. The, I think the fact, the maximum factor is 1.5, which represents a 50% increase. So this is not changing the total revenue, it's just shifting the tax burden between one class and another. And as, oh, yes, and we have a note here, we have used a uniform tax rate since 1998. In the 90s, we did have a split tax rate. The commercial was higher. And that has been, and, but we have, since 1998, maintained a uniform tax rate for that. Next slide.
Before you move, I have a question about, you mentioned the uniform tax rate hasn't changed since 1998. So was it in our distant past?
We did have a split rate in the 90s.
In the 90s?
In the 90s, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it actually took, I think, I think it was actually, it took several years after the town decided that they would, that they did not like that. It took several years to work our way out of it. Yeah, five years to work our way out of it gradually in order to avoid shocks in the system.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next, so this actually is, again, it's about the split rates, but it's comparing us to other towns. So we have several of our neighborhoods, Acton, Bedford, Neighbors Acton, Bedford, Concord, well, that's us, Lexington, and Sudbury. And as you can see in the middle there, we're, we're at the, this is, these are, we only have last year's rates, of course, because nobody set their rates for this year yet. But as you can see in the middle there, we're at 476 across the board. Carlisle and Acton also have uniform rates. The other three towns have chosen split rates, and their commercial rates go as high as 2993 in Bedford. So that's, that's.
Per thousand.
Per thousand, yeah. Which is actually more than 2, that's almost 3%. Okay, I think we're ready for the next slide. So the, and here's, how's, how the, how the six towns all stacked up by the percentage of total value that's in the other three classes, non-residential. We're at about 8%. Sudbury is at a little less than 8%. They decided to split their tax nevertheless. But Carlisle, Concord, and Acton are around, around 8, 8 to 10%. Carlisle's actually a very, very low percentage, actually. Almost 2%. Bedford and Lexington have much higher percentages, Bedford especially, and so it makes much more sense for them to split their rates. I'm not sure why Sudbury decided to split theirs. I think we're ready for the next slide. So just to go through the options of what could be done if we were to choose a, a split rate for the CIP, the current, the first line in yellow shows where we would be going if we had a factor of one, no, no split. So that's the 1296 across the board. If we go up, and I won't go through all the numbers, but I'll just go straight down to the bottom. If we went to the, if we went to the maximum split, which is 1 and 1/2, the 50%, the residential rate would fall from 1296 to 1244, a 0.05 decrease. And the, the other classes would go from 1296 to 1944, so about a, about a $6.50 increase, which just shows how, how little, how little scope we have to change the residential tax rate through this method. Okay, next slide, thank you. So we can also offer an open space discount. Now, so currently, there's no land in Concord classified as open space. We have, we have concentrated our discounts mostly under Chapter 61, 61, 61A, and 61B, which, which in fact are much more advantageous for the taxpayer than the, than the maximum open space discount would be. But, but the option does account, does exist, it does have, there's a definition, the open space has to be maintained in an open natural condition, has to contribute significantly to the benefit enjoyment of the public, and in, and not in any of those other categories. No conservation restriction, which leaves out a lot of our land, not held for income, and not under any of those other three chapters. So we, and the maximum discount is 25%.
But the land that is under conservation restriction is assessed at a much lower value as well, is it not?
The land that, I think, conservation restrictions, I think we do, well, it's, it's usually, it's usually, it's always extra land anyway.
It's excess land.
It's excess, it's always excess land, which is, which is, which is assessed at a fairly low rate. And then there's the Chapter 61s, which are assessed even, even lower. But yes, the 25%, I don't think you would, you would not, as a tax, as a taxpayer, if I had Chapter 61 or 61A or B land, I would not want to put it in open space, because there's no way that even at a 25% discount, I would still be paying more in taxes. So that's, that's, I think, one reason why we have, we have no land declared open space. People go for the, for the 61s or the, or the conservation restrictions. So again, next slide. Well, here we go again. The, the historical rates flat across the board in the 14s. Next slide. Now, here's another, another thing that the select board can do is to adopt a residential exemption. And if the residential, and the, now I know these, these numbers are a little bit hard to see, and perhaps we should think about providing a larger copy of the thing to the select board for your, for your education later, but the, I think the, actually, can you read this, which this one is? Is the, was the break-even point at a 10% discount.
And that would be no change in the bill.
Right.
And 840,000 would be $244.92 discount. $690,000 value would be a $10,00184 tax bill, and you'd get a break of 505. $540,000 value would be a $7,970,000 tax bill, and you'd get a break of 76692. 390 would give you 1,02792. 240 would give you 1,028892. And 110,000 value home would give you 1,051512 you'd get off. So if the median home price is 971,200, which it was in FY '22, you'd get a discount of 1662.
Yeah, that's $1662.
For a 10% discount.
Off of your, whatever your tax was.
Yeah, I think that, well, first of all, we had a discussion with the Board of Assessors a little while ago, in which we discussed the residential exemption in some depth, and concluded that, first of all, it wasn't technically feasible to implement for this fiscal year. So I think that we're reviewing it for the sake of, you know, you need to provide an opinion about it. However, I would note that I think that it was a sense of the board that we would like to be in a position to implement a residential exemption for FY '24 if it comes to that. So what we are requesting, I think, that the Board of Assessors do, is to do the due diligence, to understand the, the ability to implement such a residential exemption next year, and to report back to us, you know, if you have any, any concerns, you know, barriers that you see, that, and perhaps we just set a date, like four months from now or something, where we have a check-in.
Yes, I think possibly sooner than that, because the.
Three months.
Because that.
90 days.
Two to three months is probably about right, because we do need, I think, quite a bit of a lead time to get this implemented if we're going to go ahead with it. That does give us less time to, we have been investigating it.
So the end of February.
We do have some more work to do on that. I mean, I've given you here just one example of what the discount could be. Now, if the discount was higher, or I'm sorry, if the shift was higher, you'd get to, you can actually, at a 20% shift, the median discount would be 200, sorry, $355. So that's a bit more than 16%. And at 35, which is the maximum we can go to, it goes to 1,036. And at 35, which is the maximum we can go to, it goes to 1,036. That's at the median, yeah. Now, and that's, but, but the other thing, it's interesting, is it's unlike the usual use of the median, where if you know what your, if you know what the median is, and you, and you know my house is, is, you know, 1 and 1/2 times the median, my tax will be 1 and 1/2 times as much, it doesn't go that way.
Right. Because it's a fixed amount.
Yeah.
So, I mean, one thing to consider is the strategy, as you talked about, about having a differentiated tax rate for a commercial, and how you took five years to get back out of that. I think a similar kind of principle might apply for implementing a residential exemption, you know, start off low and increment what is needed.
One of the considerations is that, that unlike the senior means test tax exemption, we're not able to set a period of time within which the application has to be submitted, that can be submitted at any time. And I have not yet determined exactly, if, if somebody were to submit an application today, assuming we had the exemption, would they be eligible for an exemption on their fiscal year 2023 taxes?
But, but if the primary purpose of the residential exemption is to buffer the impact of the heavy debt service for the middle school immediately, but for other capital projects, we have a long view on when, you know, when, when that debt load is going to be reduced.
Right.
So we, we have plenty of time, and I, and I don't know whether it would take as long to get out of the residential exemption. It might be
No, I was thinking about getting into the residential exemption.
Yes.
True.
I think where we want, when we would, if we're going to do it, we want to do it in the first year that we feel the impact of the middle school.
That's right. To at least get started on it.
And this is very different from the split issue, because the
It is a sudden impact.
The proportion of commercial industrial is only 8% of the total levy, and therefore, you get very small benefit in the residential by moving the burden to the industrial, commercial and industrial, because their rate goes way up, and the residential rate doesn't go down very much. So that doesn't seem very viable, but the residential exemption, I think, is, is just going to be the only way to deal with the debt problem and to maintain any level of affordability.
Okay. But we should, we should probably head clear of the policy discussion that I introduced, I have to admit.
Not a policy question.
Okay.
It's, this residential tax exemption is not something you apply for, like the senior means tested.
It is, actually.
It's baked into the, it's baked into the task rate, or you, you have to apply?
You have to apply and have to qualify.
Yeah.
For the residential tax exemption? How do you qualify?
You qualify by being a resident of 10 years.
Primary residence. Yeah.
So you're not going to have 100% participation?
No.
Is that?
Has to be a domicile.
But was that included in the
And that's why the implementation is complex.
That you put as far as what the, the tax rate would be?
Right. The, the, the
Ah, okay.
There's, there's several assumptions about the percentage of people who will qualify.
Okay, okay.
The assumptions that were baked into these particular numbers here were that, and I think this is a little bit different than the assumptions that we presented last month, that the single family, 95% of single families would, would qualify.
Okay, but they have to actively
But they'd have to actively, yes, they would have to actively apply. 95% of condominiums would, would apply, would, would, I'm sorry, would qualify if they applied.
Right.
35% of multifamily, that's assuming that it's, you know, owner, you know, whatever, and so forth.
Fine.
But they have a very strong incentive to apply, because they get a substantial benefit.
They do, but we'd have to have a marketing campaign and
Oh, yeah.
Council on Aging and the whole, I, okay, I didn't realize how complex it was. Thank you.
So for, for the time when you come back in February or in a few months, there's three types of things I'd like to see to make up my mind. One would be, it's probably in that chart there that we can't read, you know, and you've got one for 10%, one for 20%, one for 35%. So people at all house levels can see approximately.
Okay.
That's one thing. And the second thing would be, what would it take to implement? We need a marketing campaign. Do you need more staff in the assessor's office? Do we need consultants? What, you know, what is involved? And the third thing that I would like to see is how the businesses are affected, including the landlords, and that might tie into this thing we haven't done yet, the small commercial exemption, or it might be part of this discussion, I'm not really sure, but that's definitely something. So those are the three types of things where I would, how I would decide how to vote.
Yes, I think one of the things, one of the things we can certainly, we can certainly look into, there's, obviously, if you don't qualify, then your tax rate will be much higher.
Right.
Because of, because what the thing that this does is it, is it creates a, well, examples we gave here, we're, we're assuming the fiscal year '22, this is the numbers we, we have that are, that are known. But the tax rate under this 10% shift would have gone from 1476 to 1650, so
Right, so if someone moves into town, and they don't, they don't know about it, and all of a sudden, their tax bill comes, and they didn't apply yet, is there an appeal? And how much work is that for your office? And all those kinds of things.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, all things we should consider, probably not for this
No, no.
For this meeting, unless, unless the Select Board is, is, is just going to decide to go ahead with it for this year.
No, we're not ready.
Okay. So, so we'll, so I think we'll postpone that to, to a later meeting, as we discussed. Thank you. And I think we're ready for the next slide. The next slide, and I, which has already been alluded to, the small commercial exemption is similar to the, it's similar to the residential exemption, but for commercial businesses. Again, there's a, a number of qualifications the businesses have to meet. I point out, the one thing is in order for a particular parcel to qualify, if you've got several commercial businesses in there, they all have to qualify in order for that parcel to, to qualify for the exemption. And it shifts the tax burden, again, it shifts the tax burden within the CIP class from the, from qualifying businesses to non-qualifying businesses. It also is, of course, in the case of businesses that are renting, it's going to the building owner, not directly to the business owner. So there's, it's not entirely certain about exactly how that, how that dollar amount is going to be distributed, whether it's simply going to be more profit or, or, or lower rent. We have no control over that, of course. Next slide, please. And I think, I will, I think I will save us the, going through all these terms, this is just definitions of the terms, so that in case you, for reference, in case you, in case you need to look something up, here it is. So I think we can go to the next slide. And these are the things that the Select Board has to decide at the hearing tonight, whether to select a, 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 a single, yeah, the minimum residential, single or split rate, the residential factor, a selection of an open space discount or not, whether to grant a residential exemption or not, and whether to grant a small commercial exemption or not, and in the latter two, and in the, in all these cases, if we're to decide to, to not go with a single rate, you'd have to decide what the split was going to be. So the, and the Select, I'm sorry, the Board of Assessors met on November 17th and recommended a single rate for all four of these categories. By unanimous vote in separate votes, I'm not quite sure.
So is that the end of the presentation?
I think that is the end of the presentation. Last slide is, is just, is just for color.
Okay, great. So then, are there any further questions from the Board? Yes, Mary?
I have a few questions. I'm looking at the total valuation that you use for the denominator.
Yeah.
And it's 8 billion. And I see, if I look historically, it's only gone up by, that's, that's a huge jump from '22 to '23.
15%.
18%, right. And yet, prior years had much smaller.
Yeah.
Why?
So in 2021 generates 2023's values, and it's the sales. So 2021 sales that happen within the town generate the value, so they're just generated by the sales, valid sales. And that's why.
So it really is an increase in the market value
It's an increase in the market.
Of the real estate within town.
In, in, and, and, and actually, in a prior year, because we, we do not have the ability to measure the increase in 2022, while we're still in 2022, we have to use the prior year.
Makes sense.
And in 2021, the market went crazy. That's basic, that's basically where this comes from. I mean, it's not just Concord.
But then the tax rate has declined by 13%.
No, I understand, but people are looking at what's in the newspaper.
I know, it's, it's, yes, you have to
I'm getting phone calls, like, why is this
Yeah, that's, that's, that's why I'm, I'm trying to very, very solidly reassert that you're, you know, your tax bill is not going to go up as much as your value did, because the rate
That's something that we need to get out, which I think Tari brought up earlier.
Well, and indeed, is it the case that the average tax bill should go up by about 1%?
It should go about, it should go up by about the same percentage as the levy goes up.
Yeah. It might be 2 or 3%.
Yeah, well, no, because there's new growth.
Yeah.
So it's less. So I just did the, I just did the math.
Oh, that's true, actually. It goes up, yes, it does go up by less.
Yeah, it's just by 1%.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mary?
Good question. I know that personal property is less than 1% of the total tax levy, but what is personal property?
Okay, so personal property would be things like office equipment, tools.
Pizza ovens.
Yeah, pizza ovens, dentist's chair.
This is a tax that businesses pay.
Yeah.
Is that a fair statement? Okay. And then my final question is, I didn't see a slide here, and how much is in your overlay account?
Currently, I think it is 2 million, approximately 2,066,000.
Okay, because I think it was last year, we used some of that for the stabilization fund for the Concord Middle School, and I'm wondering if you've given any thought to being able to help us with that stabilization fund again.
Yeah, so the Board has not discussed this yet, but we are, in fact, planning to have a, we are planning to, to add a meeting this month
Great.
To discuss that particular topic.
Well, and I think that we would need a warrant article at the annual town meeting to cover it.
That is, that is why we are in a hurry, I, I, I believe we're going to try to schedule it next week, because we don't want to delay any longer than necessary.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board? Okay. Any questions from those in the room? Yes, please come to the microphone. Now, state your name and address, and
Liz Kroll, 212 Hubbard Street. When you said that residents had to be 10-year residents to apply for the exemption, is that in one place, or can that be in different residences within Concord?
Oh, that's a good question. Do we know?
I think as long as, as long as it's Massachusetts 10-year, Massachusetts residents, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from those in the room? Okay, seeing none. Any questions from those on the Zoom? If you have a question, click on the reactions button at the bottom of your Zoom screen and pick the raise hand function. Yes, I do see one person, Pamela Dret, with a question. Pamela, please unmute and make your comment or ask your question.
Thank you. Pamela Dret, 13 Concord Green. I was going to ask the same thing about residency. It doesn't, it's in Massachusetts, not in Concord only, and also, are, are the automobile excise tax, is that personal property tax?
I believe the automobile excise tax is a completely separate class of, of property. It's, it's separate from, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not subject to the
It's not considered personal property in the way we tax.
Nor, nor real, nor real property. It's in none of these classes. And it's also valued by formulas that the state sets out. We do not assess how much your vehicle is worth. It's, it's simply, it's simply the, the vehicle type, the
Valued by manufacturer's retail price at $25 per thousand.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the public? I am not seeing any, so I think we're ready to have our votes.
Okay.
So the first is about establishing a single tax rate, and I think their motion will be
Okay, move to approve the selection of a single, uniform residential factor.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the second one.
The second one listed here is not the same order we had, but I don't think it matters.
It doesn't matter.
Move to not adopt a small commercial exemption.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion of that one? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to not grant an open space discount.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion of that one? All in favor?
Aye.
And move to not adopt a residential exemption this year, but to have you study it and come back and report to us.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion of that issue, which I think we've discussed? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. We will now reconvene in the Select Board room for those who